Well, seven o'clock.
Okey dokey.
All right, looks like, um, Carol, do I want us to on our attendance roll call to say attending virtually? Or what's that?
Attending remotely from, yeah, city of Dexter or if they're out in the township or something, yeah, we need that.
Okay, but we want to say attending remotely, okay.
Yes.
Well, with that, let's see, it's seven o'clock and Carol, if you'd like to call the roll call for the Dexter December 7th Planning Commission meeting, please.
Okay. Matt Kowalski.
Attending remotely from the city of Dexter.
Thank you. Tom Phillips. I know he was up there.
Here, here, sorry, I muted myself.
Okay, you got to do attending remotely from the city of Dexter. Repeat after me. Thank you. Marnie Schmidt.
Attending remotely from the city of Dexter.
Jim Carty.
Here, attending remotely from the city of Dexter.
Chet Hill.
Attending remotely from the city of Dexter.
Kyle Marsh.
Attending remotely, city of Dexter, present.
Wow, Hubbard.
Here, attending remotely from the city Dexter.
Karen Roberts. I did not see her originally. Okay, at this point. And student reps, Charlotte Hawley.
Here.
Okay, are you attending remotely from the city of Dexter or?
I'm at home on Zoom.
City of Dexter.
City, okay. Eleanor King.
Uh, here, attending remotely from the city of Dexter.
Okay. And Aiden Naughton.
Aiden is going to be a little late today. He has to make a presentation to the school board this evening.
Oh, okay.
But he will, he will join us later.
Okay, that'd be fun. Okay, so that concludes the grow call.
All right, thank you. We do have a quorum. Next on the agenda.
I think I was missed.
Oh, sorry?
I think I was missed.
Oh, Allison. Oh, excuse, well, I marked you that you were there, but.
Oh, excellent, thank you. Attending remotely from the city of Dexter.
Thank you.
Your camera was on, Allison, we would know you were here. Get marked down for that. Um, okay, so it looks like we have a quorum.
Okay, I have Karen, I see Karen there now.
Okay, Karen's, all right, welcome Karen. Next on the agenda is the action on the minutes.
Matt, wait a minute, Karen needs to announce that she's attending remotely, remotely.
I'm attending remotely.
From where? The city.
From Dexter.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, I think we got everybody covered, correct?
Yep.
Okay, great, all right, now, on the agenda, the action on the minutes from the regular October 5th meeting. Can we have somebody move the minutes, please?
Okay, that is actually the November 1st meeting.
Oh, yay. Yeah, sorry, the November.
November 2nd.
November 2nd, yes. We have somebody move the November 2nd.
I saw a move.
Okay, move Roberts? We have a hand up or, um, see a support?
No support.
Or, okay, or Hill? I just have one, we're gonna miss Jim for our little spell checks here, but I just, when I noticed spell check and Aiden's not here, so he probably wouldn't notice this, but under the student reps, it just says Aiden Houghton instead of Aiden Naughton.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, right at the beginning.
Yep, I see I did that incorrectly there and I will fix that.
Yeah, no problem. Um, any other changes to the minutes? Seeing none. Now, Carol, did you want us to do a voice vote on all these again or roll call vote?
Yep, you have to do a voice vote on, on minutes and agenda.
Any action items?
Yeah, okay. All right, so can we have a vote on the minutes from the November 2nd meeting, please?
Carty.
Uh, do I still have to say I'm attending from Dexter?
No, no, we know you're, just answer no on the minutes.
Yes.
Meeting's going downhill fast.
Yeah.
Yeah. Did I hear, yeah, okay. Did I get Kyle?
I'm a yes.
Okay, thank you. Healy?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes, yes.
Yes. Okay, minutes are approved. Can we have somebody move the agenda, please?
I'll move to that, too.
Okay, move Roberts?
Support.
What, was that Healy, I think?
Yes.
Okay, support Healy. Any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, or hearing none. Can we have a vote on the agenda, please?
Okay, Phillips?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Carty?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yes. Okay, uh, agenda is approved. All right, moving on. Item number four, the public hearings, we have two public hearings scheduled for tonight. The first public hearing is an amendment to the zoning ordinance for the outdoor service areas. First, we will have a presentation, I believe, from Michelle on this one, and then we will have public comment after that. So I guess at this time, Michelle, would you like to?
Sure, sure. Okay, good evening, Planning Commission and student representatives. Glad to see you're all well and attending from the city. So you do have a public hearing tonight, as Matt has explained, and this amendment, excuse me, this proposed amendment is, would remove outdoor seating slash eating areas as a special land use and establish outdoor service areas as a principal permitted use. The amendments would define what an accessory outdoor service area is. It would make the accessory outdoor service area permitted accessory use in specific zoning districts with a zoning compliance permit and annual renewal through administrative review. It would also establish a set of general guidelines or regulations for their operations. You have seen these amendments before. There, there is a couple of things that are being cleaned up at the same time. The suggestion by Marnie Schmidt last, the last round of text amendments to remove the underline from the certain words in section 201 to making them in quotes. Excuse me, I'm so sorry. And then the other cleanup item is in article, where did it go, where did it go, where did it go? Oh, it's definitions on page six of your packet, the medical marijuana home occupation definition, that's being removed as a cleanup item as well. Because you actually already amended the ordinance a year or so back to take medical marijuana home occupation out of the ordinance. The rest of the amendments all pertain to the switch over from outdoor seating eating areas to outdoor service areas, as was explained previous. The one section that you did not see previous to this is section, well, it's article 17, the research and development, section 1703, special land uses. The tasting room, the, I'm sorry. The accessory tasting room, excuse me, or the tasting room is permitted as an accessory to the manufacturing of alcoholic beverages. The outdoor service area is an accessory to the tasting room, and that would still require the special use. We have not removed that particular one from special use because we're not proposing that because we did not feel that Planning Commission would be comfortable with that. If I'm wrong, you can let me know that and we can, we can amend it as part of this, but, excuse me, that's why that is written the way it is. The criteria for considering this amendment, you're familiar with the criteria in section 2306. The first one having to do with a determination provided by city staff or zoning Board of Appeals regarding problems with the amendment. And you'll recall that back in 2017, Aubries and Dexter Pub both came in to amend their outdoor seating, special use approval. And, excuse me, at, at that time, there were some questions raised as to why that needed to come to Planning Commission. And part of that was that it's tied to an approved site plan. And the, just like with Dexter Pub, because they're tied to an approved site plan and the amendments that were being proposed did not fall within the minor site plan amendment section. Staff was not, did not have the jurisdiction or the authority to amend it as, through administrative process. The, at the Dexter Pub hearing, Planning Commission did ask for a city attorney opinion, but it had to do with a mechanism for the had to do with enforcement on a special land use. And at that time, the city attorney did provide the information that you were looking for, but he also recommended that the city consider taking it out of special use process. He felt that it was cumbersome and more time consuming than warranted. And so and so that's why it's here under the staff review portion. And then the second criteria is reference materials, planning and zoning publications, et cetera. And one of the things that, excuse me, pardon me for just a moment. One of the things that staff is noting is that we've learned a lot through this COVID-19 situation and we're still learning. But it has taught us that, that we can consider allowing land uses that we might not have considered pre-COVID. And we've also learned that when we do allow it administratively, it doesn't compromise the health, safety and welfare. And the examples that staff's providing in the letter have, include the utilization of on-street parking spaces for outdoor service areas. And outdoor, outdoor service areas as a year-round use. The sidewalk, the outdoor sidewalk areas that are currently operated, pardon me, or permitted by Beer Grotto, Dexter's Pub, Aubries, et cetera. The ordinance actually allows those permits to be valid for an entire year. There hasn't ever been the urgency to operate them in the winter as there is currently. Excuse me. So the, the fact that outdoor seating areas aren't just a luxury anymore, they're actually a lifeline this year. And going into, through the winter of next year, 2021 winter. They're a lifeline, so, excuse me. Some of the other information, the, that reality about the economic lifeline was, had prompted the Michigan Economic Development Corporation to develop what they called the winter strategies for downtowns and business districts. And it's a guide specifically designed to help communities jumpstart winter planning. We, we do not normally do it, other than for event type of things where we're drawing people into downtown. We don't usually do it for allowing outdoor seating and things like that. So this guide, which is offering creative solutions, ways to dialogue with the community, with community stakeholders, and offers a foundation for embracing winter as a season of prosperity, not just a time when everything kind of closes up for five to six months. And I think all of you are familiar with the National Trust for Historic Preservation's Main Street model. That four-point, four-point approach that focuses on design, organization, promotion and economic sustainability or economic, what are they calling it now? Economic vitality, excuse me. They have seven principles, just, again, just like the four-point approach for a Main Street model. But one of the things that the guide does do is identifies, it recommends that communities identify local zoning ordinances, zoning, which I think they mean regulations, and policies to determine if any updates are needed to support and accommodate creative efforts and new initiatives as one of the three steps required to implement the seven guidelines. Outdoor seating as a permitted use with administrative approval is, would be a new initiative for the city. The city, this third criteria is that the city attorney recommends an amendment. I've already established that with the first criteria. And then the last one is the amendment would promote implementation of goals and objectives in the master plan. And you are very familiar with your updated master plan. And one of the goals is, falls under economic development, and that's to provide quality, job-producing economic development for a diverse economy within the city. And then you have two strategies that, of the many, that support it, that are applicable in this case. The first one is to promote and coordinate activities aimed at improving the business climate within the city. And then to plan for and promote tourism for the city of Dexter. The proposed amendment to allow the accessory outdoor service area as a byright use in certain commercial business districts, subject to administrative review, would help implement the stated goals and objectives of the master plan as cited herein. So in summary, this, this zoning ordinance amendment would eliminate a costly, cumbersome and time-consuming process while still protecting the public health, safety and welfare. It would immediately help local businesses now and into the future. It's been recommended by the city attorney, and it would help implement economic goal, economic development goals and strategies in the city's master plan update. I've provided you with three different motions, the first one being to approve or deny as presented to the city council. The second, excuse me, the second one would be to approve, but with any changes that you so choose to make. The third would be to postpone till a date specified by you to address whatever concerns you may have. With that, I'm open for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Michelle. I just, I think at this time, we'll go for fellow commissioners, since it is a public hearing, we will open the public hearing next, and then we will have our conversation, a motion, just after we conclude the public hearing. If you could remind me again, Michelle or Mike, the, for raising your hand when you're speaking over the phone, is it star nine?
Star nine, yeah.
Star nine, okay. So at this time, I think we'll move to the public hearing. That if anybody would like to speak on this, the item, the text amendment for the outdoor service area change is a public hearing at this time. If you would like to speak to that, please hit star nine on your telephone.
Doesn't look like you have any public attending tonight, Matt.
Going to say, from my view, it looks like.
It's just all of you. But it's good to keep it open for just a minute or so.
Okay.
You opened it at.
I had you open it at 7:20.
Yeah, thank you, Carol.
Thanks, Carol, I had down seven, 19.
It just flipped, flipped over.
Oh, no, okay.
Hasn't gone to 21 yet, but.
Okay, well, at this time, we'll, seeing nobody, we'll close the public hearing at 7:21. So at this time, we are open for Planning Commission discussion. As Michelle mentioned, there are motions that are in our packet on page 12. If somebody would like to make a motion, then we can open up the floor for discussion, please. And if you guys can remember to, please try and raise your hand visually or on the or virtually, I guess, if that's the way, so we can help keep track of people. So this time, if somebody would like to make a motion.
I'll do it.
Thanks, Kyle.
Okay, so, um, I would say.
This is Kyle?
This is Kyle, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and I would say I'm gonna make the motion number one. Pursuant to section 2306 of the city of Dexter zoning ordinance, together with the information presented by staff and the input received during public hearing, conducted by the Planning Commission today, December 7th, 2020. The Planning Commission recommends city council approve AP 2020 21-03, outdoor service area zoning ordinance text amendments provided.
Okay, thank you. So move Marsh, is there support?
I'll support.
And who was that, please?
That Carty?
Carty, I'll support.
Okay, so Carty, support, move Marsh, support Carty. At, at this time, we're open for discussion, for questions for Michelle, other commissioners. Yes, Mr. Hill?
I noticed a couple of things, which I had questions on, one, so simple typo, I think. Article 17 FD. An outdoor eating service, shouldn't that be outdoor service area?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. And then back at, if I can find it here. Back at, give me a second, if you will. I, one of the things that caught my eye was, this is right at the beginning, the general regulations, six. The statement that is tables, chairs, umbrellas, planters, et cetera, et cetera, shall be compatible with the architectural character of the building. And to me, that's a, that's a tough one. What is the architectural character of the building? And if it's a brick building, do you put brick chairs? I mean, I, and if you go with something like, you know, if you, with a real, with a modern style, that it's hard to say it's complementary to a building, but it fits downtown, it fits the streetscape. I think that would be just fine. So it's wording that kind of troubles me on that one.
So would, how would you like to massage that?
Maybe compatible with the downtown character. Again, that's a, that's kind of a squirrely definition, but nevertheless, at least at least it fits, you know, the streetscape downtown, whatever. I don't know if that's the best.
So is it? So this is, this is one of the, this is one of the regulations that's currently in the ordinance. And one of the things we did is just move everything over. So I, I get the point you're making is that character, we haven't really defined it. So.
I mean, who determines that? You?
It would, it would be me, the way, similar to the way you all have determined it in the past. We don't have any one particular style. I don't know that we will ever go to a particular style. Part of what makes a, in, this is my opinion, what makes our downtown have its character is the uniqueness that each business brings to it. Whether it's different color umbrellas, you know, one business has one color, another business has another. The, the method in which they enclose their outdoor seating area or the tables and chairs that they use. I think the point that you all want is that, and I believe it's in here, and if it's not, we can probably just massage this, is you want good-looking, well-maintained street furniture, right? Or I see, I see, I see a funny, you know, cross up on your face, Matt.
Well, it's a hard, it's just such a hard thing to characterize. I mean, I know you're tracking, it's just tough.
In fact, Matt, your take on this would be interesting.
Yeah, we, well, this is something that we struggled with for a while between when it comes up and we've had the language in that code for a while. I think we've had similar type of discussions. And I think with the flexibility, you know, I don't have a strong preference either way. I mean, I think it's ultimately got to where, we haven't had an issue with it, put it that way. So I know sometimes it's creating language that is unnecessary, if we don't need to fix something, but most of that's already in there, hasn't necessarily been a problem. But I'm always open for revising things that'll make it simpler to enforce and cleaner.
Are you comfortable if we took it out and expanded number eight? So that it was all outdoor service area, street furniture, tables, in other words, tables, chairs, umbrellas, planters, trash receptacles and other elements of street furniture shall be maintained in a manner that's compatible, et cetera. Are you comfortable with just that? And I see.
I think that's, I mean, I gotta tell you, I think, I think that's a, that's not, that's a different solution to a different problem. I don't think that connects with this. I think we're talking square pegs and.
And I thought Tom, Tom Phillips also has.
I, I think we should, we often have some language that provides guidance without prescription. So one way to do this would be to show pictures of street furniture of life. Another one would be to say that it is the intent of this ordinance that the furniture is whatever. And so we give them like a direction, but we don't try to specify it.
And I think mostly we're interested in, I think from before, when we've come around to this, it's like kind of the quality of the, of the stuff we have out there, not necessarily, I think character is a tricky one, but again, not the cheap plastic folding chairs and the things like that that would blow away. I mean, I think that was more of what, of where we're trying to go, I think, of some, some sense of.
I agree. In that context, we could, we could talk about metal furniture or if we wanted to, or I would still say, I kind of agree with what, what Chet is saying in the sense that I think we, there's a way to express that we're looking for furniture and the character of the community of the downtown without saying what exactly it is. And also what we're trying to do is, like you said, if somebody, if we talk about furniture and the character of the downtown and somebody comes in with plastic, white plastic chairs from Target, Michelle's gonna be able to say, this isn't, you know, purely not the intent of the ordinance, and you gotta do better than this. Or we can say literally something like metal, we could say something more specific, like metal chairs in context with the downtown, maybe something like that, and then let them go there. If you want to be more specific, you could say cast metal chairs and push it further along.
Okay, and I see, oh, this is good conversation. Karen, Karen Roberts had a hand up, and then Jim, Carty, next. But Karen, if you'd like to.
I had a couple of thoughts. One is, we have, I believe, done this, used this kind of, it's sort of vague language. vague language with respect to materials about buildings and things like that. So it's not, I don't think a completely new sort of type of framing what we're looking for. And so I'm not uncomfortable with it that way, but this is something that, you know, when we revise the coming up during the ordinance revision period, one of the things on the list is form-based zoning, and that's gonna have to reckon with this notion somewhat more specifically, I think. So, I mean, I'm almost ready, and like you were saying, metal, wouldn't be nice, maybe nice wooden, you know.
Yeah, like cheap.
All that, you know, that, you know, makes you wanna sit there and, you know, hold hands.
I think we
You know, that'd be very nice. But, so I would be reluctant to put materials, but I I think
And I know.
I think we could need it. What it's done is gives us a lot of wiggle room. Which, well, now I guess it gives Michelle a lot of wiggle room, but she's really concerned, she'll, you know, it'll come to us eventually. If she says, look, this is one I can't handle, but somehow I don't see that happening, but nevertheless.
Sorry, we could exclude plastic, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, Jim.
So this was, I'm pretty sure that this topic was actually covered when Michelle sent me to the Planning Commission training, which was a while ago. I think it was actually used as an example of how not to do this. And if I recall, what they said was municipalities and planning commissions often put language in like character of the community or character of the downtown because essentially they want a way to turn down things that are clearly problematic. But that when tested, those vague standards almost always prove legally useless. And so what they actually suggested at the training was that you do make materials, specific standards. And so, and that you just need to have a rational basis for it. And I believe the reason it sticks in my head was the example they used was an instance in which the ordinance called for metal and plastic materials. And it was challenged, and, I'm sorry, metal, metal and wooden materials. And it was challenged, and they said, well, we don't want plastic because a couple of times a year, we get a big thunderstorm and they, they, the wind throws them all around town, and they get broken and no one picks them up. And apparently that was held to be a good enough reason not to, not to have plastic. And so, you know, I have to say, I don't, I don't have a strong feeling on this one, one way or the other. I think some of our businesses have plastic now, and it's never bothered me. But I felt like since the, since I had been sent to the planning commission training, and this specific example was given, I should mention.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
Yeah, totally appreciate that.
Thank you.
How is, I'm sorry, was there somebody else that had a hand up?
I think Chad, also, yes.
About this, or here's an, here's an idea. Tables, chairs, et cetera, et cetera. Shall be of a quality to match the architectural character of the downtown, or the something along that, rather than compatible, which is a tough word. Quality suggests that it's good stuff.
I agree with you. How about something like this, Matt, unless you've got something you wanted to say? Tables, chairs, umbrellas, et cetera, shall be high-quality materials such as, but not limited to metal or wood or resin, which is, my understanding is different from plastic. And just leave it there, and not tie it to any type of architectural character or architecture of a building or anything like that. I think that's still pretty subjective when we're looking at the architecture of downtown. Who's to say that, and this isn't a critique, Chad, who's to say whether the existing outdoor furniture it meets that that standard now or not?
Well, you've got a point. We've got, you know, wooden picnic tables and monument art. And, you know, other times. But does it set a certain quality for the town? Although I do like what Chad says about, you know, are we matching not the building itself, which I think is a valid point, we're really trying to match the rest of the street furniture in the town.
Right, the downtown character.
Yeah, so I think distinguishing it from the building itself is a nice change.
So if we take
You want to restate that, Chad? Shall be of a quality.
Of the, to match the, the character of the, or to match the downtown character. Or the streetscape, if they want to put that in there. Something along those lines.
So do you think we could have the I mean, is it do we have to get the text on this right to get the the motion to pass?
In order to, to approve it the way you've determined, it's going to be an amendment that would be, it would be motion number two. Kyle.
You'd have to amend the most, the first, wouldn't be a second motion, right? It'd just be an amendment to the main?
It's the amendment to his first motion.
Yeah, okay.
If you were okay with that, Kyle.
Yeah, I think we're getting in the right direction with it.
Yeah, and Karen?
Could we just take out architectural, or make it the character of the district where the building, where the OSA is located, rather than take out building? Because it can be more than one district. I mean, we're all picturing the central business.
Oh, that's right, it could be in, in a different district, you're right.
So if we just made it compatible with the character of the district where the OSA is located?
Yeah.
Quality is the main thing that I think we're trying to get at here, is not the cheap even more than the character.
So shall be, shall be of high-quality materials and compatible with the district in which the OSA is located. Does that work for you all?
I think that's good.
But Kyle, you like that? And Chad?
I would say let's see, we got the quality. Can you read that back one more time, Michelle?
Yep, hang on one second, Kyle. So tables, chairs, umbrellas, et cetera, and other elements of street furniture shall be of high-quality materials and compatible with the district in which the OSA is located.
Compatible.
I'm sorry, should, did you want consistent or compatible, or reflective?
I like consistent.
Yeah, that are, rather than and.
This.
Okay, that are.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other items? So I, I think, are you guys, kind of, that addresses that issue, I, I think, correct? Yeah, okay. Additional items for this section revision? Did I see Karen, did you raise your hand briefly, or, oh yeah, so it's like I have Karen, and, oh, and Allison. Allison also has her hand up. So Allison, were you gonna speak to the last issue, or are you gonna the one we just closed, or are we gonna speak to new ones?
I just had a few comments on the way the current ordinance is written.
Okay, now.
So now?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So it looked like under section three point two eight, that there were two Cs. I'm sure this would have been caught by somebody.
Yep.
Okay, good. And I also think that this, under the second C, number five, that maybe there shouldn't be commas, because the way it was written doesn't seem like it needed to have commas.
I agree.
Good, Michelle?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay, was there anything else, Allison?
Yep, under number nine, under the same one, I think that there needed to be a comma, under the second permit. So if the performaty has failed to correct violations of the OSA permit, comma.
Okay. Got it.
Maybe it was the second sentence. I'm looking again, because there's a lot of permits in here, but I, it's a comma issue, Michelle, so.
Yep, I got it.
And then on page fourteen seventeen point oh three F three, I think there was just a issue of it didn't sound right. I think it should be area instead of areas. F three D.
F three B?
D.
An outdoor service. Diaz and David?
That's the one that Chad already
Yeah.
So he's already got, okay.
But there might be an additional correction needed.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, he, yeah, he started talking about it, but I'm not sure we were talking about the same thing.
Okay. Here we go. So an outdoor, outdoor service area shall be defined and clearly marked using decorative planters, posts, and rope, live landscape material such as evergreen screen and/or other similar means to enclose the outdoor service area. Correct?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that second one, too.
Okay.
That was it.
Okay, cool, got it.
Thank you. And I think, Ms. Roberts, you had your hand up as well?
Well, there, yeah, there were two things. One, back to page eight, number eight. And, you know, this is about, it's the one addressing maintenance of the outdoor furniture. No broken peeling, rusting, or other aesthetic elements should be left outdoors. I don't, what, what is that? I mean, it's the aesthetic elements part, I'm having.
So maybe we should say hang on a second.
Because don't you mean aesthetic elements that are in disrepair are not well-maintained or something, not aesthetic elements, right?
Hang on a second. Which number is that again? I'm looking at the wrong one. Eight, all OSA furniture shall be maintained in a manner that's compatible with the principal building site elements, i.e. sounds, signs, awnings, and walls. No broken peeling, rusting, or other aesthetic elements shall be left outdoors for continued use? Is that the one you're talking about?
Yes, well, what's wrong, I mean, I, I don't, it's, the aesthetic elements to me doesn't fit.
Oh, what is?
I see what you're saying.
They're furniture elements, or something like that.
No, we want, I mean, but it's what the way it reads right now, is if they've got some lovely aesthetic element, it can't be left outside.
So, yeah, I think, you're right, you're right. So I think it's that the all OSA furniture shall be maintained in a manner, or shall be maintained and no broken peeling, rusting, or other
Other elements of disrepair.
Yeah.
Perhaps.
That's not, covers it. And then the other thing, I just want to, I'm not clear about this, and I just want to be sure I understand. It, this is, this is completely business-specific, right? But if there's a sort of common area, like, hasn't there been discussion about putting something in the parking lot between Dairy Queen and Birobrado that would be, you know.
Second. Okay, go ahead, Karen.
All right, I just wanted, this is, if there's any push to have a common area, like, you know, instead of it being just serving one particular business establishment, that it can be, several can kind of go in together.
Oh, like what, like what Michigan Liquor Control is doing right now that we're looking for?
Yeah, does this cover that, or is that a whole different animal?
So this is only for individual outdoor areas. For the, for the social district tent that the DDA has, is funding, we would follow these, these guidelines for that tenant.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, okay, all right.
That's a good question, Karen. Thank you, I didn't think about that one.
Let's, I just want to make sure we've got this number eight clear. All outdoor service area furniture shall be maintained in good repair. Any broken, peeling, rusting, or other elements in disrepair shall be removed. Is that what you're kind of looking for?
That's, that's, covers it to me.
I think so. Chad's nodding as well, so I think.
Okay. Yoki.
Okay, good.
Yep, yep.
All right, we're caught up to speed. Other, and Karen, I think you still have your virtual hand up, unless you're
I don't mean to.
Okay, anybody else like to comment on, again, the, this is the outdoor service area amendments?
I actually have one.
Yes.
Am I allowed to do that, since it's my motion?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So I was looking at the very last one, R and D, special land. You know, my only frame of reference is the staff room up there. But I looked at the item number C. And I just want to make sure, I mean, it says twenty-five feet from the entrance. And I feel like their little area is maybe a little further, so I didn't know.
Oh, okay.
Their, no, their area, their area in order to get the permit that they got for this temporary area had to be within that distance verified by Liquor Control Commission.
Got it.
So their, their whole area based on the plan that they provided, both to the city and to Liquor Control, did meet that.
Oh, good.
Okay?
Okay, good question. So any, any other items for discussion on this? I, I think these changes clarify, clean it up nicely, so we don't have to get involved with moving seats around next time that Aubrey's, or if somebody wants to adjust their outdoor seating plan, they don't need to come through us, so I think this is a huge relief. There's no value added in that process, I don't think, so. Okay, so if seeing no other hands up, we could, we do have, so the original motion was moved by Marsh and supported by Hill, I believe, that's what I have. And so if there's no other questions or comments at this time, is everybody clear on what we're voting on with the amended language regarding the outdoor seating? Seeing nobody confused? Okay, good. With that See, nobody confused? Okay, good. With that, Carol, can we call, roll call vote, please?
Okay, this is, this is the voting on two, correct? With, with the changes that were illustrated, okay. Hill.
What was that?
Who, who did you call?
Yeah.
Hill. Hill, Hill.
Hill.
Chat.
Prove.
Okay. Roberts?
Hi, yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Cardy?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yes. Okay.
Thank you all.
Um, so the second, we have a second item for a public hearing tonight, also another zoning ordinance, this is changes to the outdoor or commercial kennel section of code, I should say. So with that, I will introduce our staff, and I believe Michelle will do the presentation on this one.
Nope, Mike's doing the presentation on this one.
Okay, right, please take it away.
All right, well, this is the minor ordinance cleanup that the board discussed in October to correct a conflict between the general code zoning ordinance. And that'll clarify that residents who own pets are exempt from the special land use requirements for commercial kennels. And it'll add some clarifying language to the zoning ordinance. Saying that the kennels are, the kennel requirements are specifically for commercial kennel operations. And then it'll, there is also a corresponding amendment proposed for the general code that'll remove some of the ambiguity about private pet ownership. And it'll also move an existing annual permit requirement for commercial kennels from the general code to the zoning ordinance. So this amendment, we ran the sections by the city attorney, recommended we move forward with the amendments. We also asked council's feedback after the, after the planning commission's discussion in March, they had nothing to add. And so we drafted the amendments based on your feedback from October.
Okay. All right, thank, thank you. So again, at this time, we will, this is a public hearing, we will open it up at, um, let's see, seven fifty-two, open the public hearing. Anybody is in the audience? I don't see anybody, but you would hit star nine to raise your hand. So open the public hearing, seven fifty-two. Not see anybody on the line, but give it a minute.
And just to take up time, Matt, Mike did provide the three, um, suggested motions, just like, like that was provided for the previous amendment, and I think you're now at seven fifty-three.
Yes. Okay, so with that, we still seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing at seven fifty-three. Again, as Michelle just mentioned, that we do have suggested motions, it would be on page thirty of our packet. So with that, would somebody like to make a motion for discussion?
I remember we, that we consider text, or the, you know, come on, Karen. Motion number one, that we directly either approve or deny this text amendment.
Okay, is there support?
I'll second that.
Uh, I think that was Hills. Okay, so support Hill?
Yeah.
Um, okay, with that, we are now open for discussion. Any questions for Mike? Please crystal clear on what we're doing?
I have a quick question. Marsh?
Sure, Kyle.
So section B, the, section eight eleven B, number B. I think we've got a one hundred foot step back. And I'm just wondering where that number came from.
That was the existing requirement for commercial kennels. I think this section was written in twenty ten, if I'm not mistaken, and, and so that's when that requirement was included.
I don't remember why we.
Is this, is the intent of this to be, to allow kennels in a residential district?
I think the.
Special use, is that what it is?
It would be a special use, yes. I imagine the intent would be to provide some buffer if it was adjacent to residential district. I'd have to look back and see. And check all, all the districts to see where their commercial kennels are allowed and whether or not, none of that would change under the amendment.
Yeah, it's not changing up any new uses that are opening for commercial kennels. Or any new districts.
I think the. Looking at the ordinance really quickly, because I don't remember what, what district kennels were allowed in. I don't think they're in any residential district, if I remember correctly.
Are there, um, so Michelle's looking that up. Are there any other questions regarding this? That would just be the point of clarification, get that from Michelle?
Yeah, that's my only question, whoops.
Yes, Karen.
So where could they be if they have to be ten acres?
Well, that, that's a good question, Karen. There aren't ten acres that are vacant currently in the city.
No, there are not.
Somebody would have to assemble land, which can be done. I mean, somebody could do that.
Seeing them in RD.
You saw them in RD?
Yes. Oh, sorry.
Going to say not in RD.
Nope.
I don't, Mike, I'm not seeing them in any district. I thought we had one district that they were in. I was thinking, I was thinking it was the multiple family. But.
Industrial, maybe?
No, it's not in the industrial either. I looked in that one.
I see them in.
Well, so, so I guess, although, what was, the, so Kyle, what was your main concern with that, though? Is that?
Oh, I guess none. I mean, I, I didn't even see the bigger question, much of that ten acres one right above it. So I kind of, I kind of glossed over the big one. Yeah, so. I mean, that's, that makes more sense then. You have ten acres, hundred foot, isn't that far?
Right, ten acres with a hundred feet does make sense, but I think we've got a, a, a bigger issue here is that it's not listed in any district, it doesn't look like.
Oh, as an, as an allowed principal use?
Uh, no, as a special use.
Or as a special use?
I just searched the zoning code for kennel.
Yeah, it's not showing. Um. So I guess to answer your question, Kyle, which district would the planning commission or districts with the planning commission consider this to be an appropriate use, and would you still maintain the ten acres and hundred feet, or would you be modifying that? I think it would be that you'd be modifying it, but I'd like to hear what you have to say.
Well, I also see that there's like, there's like a farm thing in the zoning, and it's, you know, a ten acre thing, it's almost like.
Right, that'll come out. Remember, that was one of those things that Megan had mentioned would be amended as part of our update.
So could we just add this in that section then, Michelle, to look into where this should be, rather than going through it right now, because we would have to. So it looks like we need to add it into the zoning code for some district, correct?
Yes.
So should we just add that to our zoning list of when we go through a zoning ordinance now, rather than, because I don't think we could add that on the fly right now, anyway?
Okay, we could do, we could do that. It doesn't change anything as far as what your ordinance currently has. But because this was an enforcement, an enforcement of noise that.
Right.
That brought this to your attention. It is something that we'll have to clean up later.
It may make sense to update this text definition and then figure out where it could fit in the plan, if we go through it.
Yeah. And I think we should go through it and do a, uh, yeah, rather than, we can't necessarily add it on the fly right now, it wasn't, because that's into an entirely different section of the code.
Right, no, we, your feedback, sorry if I missed, uh, gave you the wrong impression. When I asked what your feedback was, it wasn't to go forward and then approve it as it's presented. We would have to come back to you next month, um, with a new public hearing to address that.
Okay, or though, could it be pulled out and then just addressed separately? We just address, address this that we have now? And then address it with the future zoning ordinances, or no?
You could. It feels, it feels, if you want my personal opinion, it feels a little sloppy if we did it that way.
That's fine. No, yes, I think, unless anybody, I would go with what you, what you think on this. So, yeah, if you prefer to do it next month, that's fine. Get it done.
Mike, any thoughts? And Karen's got a hand up.
Oh, sorry, sorry, Karen's.
Um, I would want to take time to look into how and where. Or where we could suggest the kennels be permitted. Well, not ideal. I don't think, I, I think the amendments would at least clear up the ambiguity for what's required for residents and commercial kennels, and would kind of leave us in the same spot regarding where they, where commercial panels could be permitted. So while, while not ideal, I don't necessarily think it would be an issue to approve it, but however you want to handle that, Michelle, on that.
Okay.
I agree with that, but.
Wait, Karen?
Got it, it was good.
Now, it was kind of the same thing. I kind of feel like we should act on this because, so there's no, you know, no ambiguity for, you know, just regular people who have animals. And then, you know, put it on the list of, of things that need to be addressed, you know, kind of on a broader scale, looking at the different districts and seeing where this might be possible. And let, you know, how, how that ten acre can be sort of responsibly, you know, adjusted.
Okay, so it's another voice to basically deal with what we have in front of us today. And then Michelle can look in, in, again, if it's next month or so, when you want to bring that back, yeah, whatever, I'll defer to your judgment on that, whatever you think.
Okay, Mike and I will talk about it tomorrow.
Okay, all right. So good, thanks, Kyle, for pointing that out. Um. Okay, additional, so we're still discussing the, um, the rest of the text amendments. Are there other items within there? That people have questions, comments, concerns? Mike or Michelle? See any other hands up? Um, okay, so I think, um, I'm correct, we go forward with this amendment, and then we, if planning commission is comfortable, approve this, and then we'll see the kind of a follow up to this at the next meeting or so. So seeing no other hands up or discussion items, why don't we, Carol, would you have a roll call vote, please, on the, on the main motion?
Yes, and this is number one option. Healy?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Cardy?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yes. Okay, so that is approved and moved forward, and I see a follow up to that within the next month or two. Um, moving right along, pre-ran citizen participation, item five on the agenda. Uh, we have no pre-ran citizen participation tonight. Non-arranged participation. If anybody is in the audience that would like to speak, please raise your hand. Hit star nine if you're on the phone. Seeing no one out there, we'll move right along. Reports of officers, chairman report. I have nothing much to report tonight, other than welcoming our new member, Wa Hubbard, who will get to, um, actually, why don't we get to her right now? Let's introduce our new council ex officio member, Wa. Welcome aboard. Would you like to introduce yourself?
Sure, thanks. Um, so I'm Wa Hubbard, obviously, as you know. I think I've met some of you in person, and some of you I haven't met in person. So I'm looking forward to when we can all be together and I can actually meet you, but this will have to do for now. Obviously, I was elected to city council, so here I am. I have been a resident of the city since twenty sixteen, I think. But I grew up in Dexter Township. I went to Chelsea schools, but my first job was the Dairy Queen, so. Been around here a while. Um, I've been interested in the planning commission for a while. Actually, um, I was, I've been on ACH since twenty sixteen, and, um, if I didn't get elected, I was, wanted to wait for a seat to open up on planning anyway, because I just, it's somewhere I've wanted to dig in and be involved. So I'm happy to be here, and if you guys have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them. I don't really have a report today, but I will in the future. So that's about it.
Thank you. Wel, welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Thanks.
We are the best commission by far.
Absolutely.
I, you know, a lot of it's the leadership, but you know, but, but a lot of it's the members as well. Really great, so you'll, you'll really enjoy it. Um, I have, I stuck around for a couple of years, so I enjoy it. Um, all right, any other planning commissioners like to share anything this, this evening? Hands going up?
Got you.
Okay.
Got good family news. Found out we're having a boy.
Yay, congratulations.
Congratulations, Kyle.
Hey.
Um, about in the middle of April, so he'll be coming, coming pretty soon.
Congratulations.
What need to do now?
Kyle, what, what do you think happens first? Your child is born, or Matt gets a haircut?
Ah, we'll have to, we'll have to keep an eye on that. I, I'm sure. We'll have to get him some type of headband, though.
I'll send a doodle poll out tomorrow.
Okay.
Very nice, very nice.
That's common of the evening.
Hey, once this COVID gets over, haircut places open up and so on and so forth.
I do have a report from the zoning board of appeals, if it's appropriate to.
Yes.
Talk about that right now.
Yes, please do. We'll roll right to that.
We met, uh, last week, yeah, last week, and, um, the, the item of discussion, the variance that was being requested was being requested by Dollar Tree, and it had to do with their sign. They wanted to increase the size of their sign to fit the marquee on the building, since their building is quite long and is larger than most of the other buildings there. The, um, the discussion basically centered on visibility from the road. And the, um, and the fact that other variances had been granted to other buildings in that same district. But in the end, ultimately, it was a unanimous vote not to allow Dollar Tree to, to increase the size beyond what the zoning ordinance requires.
Thank you. That was the only item on the agenda?
That was the only thing.
Okay, great. Thank you, Chad. Um, okay, any other commissioner items? I think so, no other commissions to report on. Okay, Michelle, community development, office report.
So, um, excuse me, we have, council has a. council has approved the social district, as you know, and staff has prepared the application to the Michigan Liquor Control District so that we can have a designated social district. Um, I'm currently interacting with, uh, MLCC on some questions they had about our, uh, district and uh, so hopefully this will continue to move forward. Excuse me. The, um, let's see. Uh, at the same time, you're doing the text amendment for the outdoor seating area. Uh, when it goes to council, uh, next Monday, it will also they will also have to look at a resolution for establishing new fees. Um, not increased fees, but new fees, because before it was outdoor seating areas, now it's going to be outdoor service areas. So one of the other, uh, one of the other elements of this is, um, do they charge for the actual besides just the application? Do they charge for the use of the space, uh, the way some communities, uh, do? And currently because of COVID, what staff is is recommending is just keep the fees the the way they currently are, which is the $50 for the initial application and $50 to renew. Um, after the COVID crisis is done and we don't have the same, um, constraints economically, then council could always amend this resolution to consider a a fee based on, um, uh, the use of the public space, so. Additionally, the the, uh, the state has is releasing a new small business grant. It'll be the application period will be open December 15th. It's a first come, first serve. It's to cover payroll expenses, rent, mortgage, utility expenses, et cetera, for very specific industries or businesses, so restaurants, bars and other food and beverage service providers. Uh, travel and tourist destinations, including lodging providers, live event venues and movie theaters, conference and meeting facilities, ice rinks, indoor water parks, bowling centers and gym and fitness centers. Um, these are, uh, CERSAC dollars that the state still has available. And so this is where they're this is where the what they're targeting right now. Staff has, uh, received this information last week and got it out to the business community and reminders will be, uh, sent out as well. Was another grant that came out after your last meeting was also a first come, first serve. Excuse me, the amount range, I'm sorry, yes, the amount range was a 1,000 to 10,000 range and it was to help certain types of businesses, many of the same type we just spoke of, um, to winterize in the coming months. So, um, that one opened on November 18th. To the best of my knowledge, um, it's application period is probably closed now because it was first come, first serve. And the, uh, decision will be made by they're going to make it as soon as possible, obviously. Um, but that's about as much as we've got there. Let's see, we know that Noble Appliance opened on Black Friday. And based on what I've seen, excuse me, in Friends of Dexter, some people were really happy and other people weren't. So, um, um, that's about it. Uh, staff is also working on, um, online permitting. We're just in the very beginning stages. Mike's doing the heavy lifting on this. Again, it's a technical thing, so better him than me. And as soon as we've got something tangible, um, we will update you in council. Anybody have any questions for me?
Oops. Another question.
Yes, Karen.
We just, um, do you have any updated information about whether we're going to be meeting personally or virtually starting in January?
We are still meeting virtually through the end of the year unless there is any, um, emergency order that would, um, uh, allow us to continue in virtual. Excuse me, I believe, um, I sent out an email after the Open Meetings Act was, um, was a, uh, signed by the governor. Active military, uh, personnel can still do the virtual meetings or remote meetings. Um, there are certain criteria. If a, um, if a body, public body meets remotely, that is, uh, under some sort of emergency order. Um, if you're active military, um, or if you have a medical condition. We're still trying to parse out that language. What I heard through, um, uh, through a webinar that I attended, like this was in the email I sent. Um, it the intent is that people still meet in person unless there's no way around a medical condition. So I think the example I gave you is I have asthma. I could not use that as a reason not to attend if I'm not having a problem with it. If, excuse me, if I was having, um, difficulty breathing or something like that, I could use that as a medical condition to not attend. Does that make sense to everyone?
So, so yeah, so basically we will be meeting in person in January.
Unless something changes. And we know that the governor did extend the, um, the current, I shouldn't say the governor extended. The health department has extended the order and she announced it today. Um, and that goes until December 20th, if I'm not mistaken. And the word on the street is that, um, it's probably going to get extended again. So, um, at this point, I think we'll end up meeting virtually again. But I don't have a crystal ball to tell you absolute. So if anything changes, we will let you know. Um, when it comes to your meeting for January, what is it, the fourth, I think it is? Um, you'll know. You'll know before that meeting if it's virtual or not. Hopefully, at least a week before we put the the packet out, okay? Thanks.
And Michelle is a follow up to that. Um, with with the Encore Theater moving in there and all that in the school, are we still? Are we still meeting at the senior center? Because that's when we when we go back to ver- or in-person meeting? Is that still the facility that we'll be using?
No, we will not be using the senior center. We were talking with the Encore Theater about a lease situation. Um, in the final analysis, the board for Encore determined that, um, because of the 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 COVID crisis and the health concerns associated with it, there was no good way to ensure that the space would be clean enough after every meeting for the seniors the next morning. And so they they respectfully declined to enter into any lease arrangement with the city currently. Once the COVID, uh, crisis is is over and done with, they're they're more than happy to work with the city. Um, I believe right now we're talking with, uh, St. Andrews. Carol knows a little bit about that to utilize their space, um, but details are still being worked out.
Okay, well, you you'll you'll let us know when we need to.
We will let, absolutely.
Okay. So, all right, sounds good. Um, any questions for Michelle? Any city business? Seeing no questions. We'll move along to, uh, communications. Looks like we have one communication from one of our student reps regarding a food drive?
Yes, oh, so, uh, good evening. Um, the Dexter High School Student Council has arranged a socially distant food drive at Creekside December 14th through 18th from four to six, because we cannot do our usual stuff to Voss Event Food Drive at Bush's. So this is going to be our alternative and during this time of crisis, we would like, um, the community as a whole, not just the school district, to participate.
Hey, awesome. Thank you. Thank you for making the announcement.
Thank you.
Any details of when, time, um, things like that, Aiden?
Yes, um, I'm sorry if it didn't come through all the way, but, um, December 14th through 18th at from four to six.
Okay.
And you said that was Mill Creek Middle School?
Creekside.
Oh, Creekside.
Baker Road.
Okay, and is there a website or or some other place to get more information?
Um, someone's working on like an announcement type poster.
Okay.
If you want, if you do get something like that announcement, if you want to forward it to Michelle and Michelle can let us know as a commission.
Okay, I'll have something on Wednesday.
Okay, cool. Excellent.
Great, thank you. Okay, uh, with that old business, we have no old business tonight. Um, new business, we have no new business either. So moving right along, proposed business for next meeting, January 4th, 2021. Um, looks like we'll have the ADU, the accessory dwelling units back. As I saw from a note from Michelle that, uh, we postponed that from tonight till January. Did you want to add anything to that, Michelle?
No, just thank you very much for your patience and understanding.
No, no problem. And I I I think, as I said in the email, I think it's it's always I think we appreciate as a commission, if you can, you need to take the time to get something to work through it. I think that's always a good idea and rather have you go through everything and answer your questions first to bring it to us. So not a problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, and a zoning ordinance update. That would that be from, uh, Megan, I assume?
From Megan, yes. So the one thing, um, I do want to bring up is we have thought that possibly December 21st could be the joint meeting between the different boards and commissions regarding this. Um, but the zoning board of appeals has to meet to approve their minutes. Um, that's part of their bylaws.
There's another hearing as well.
I'm sorry, Mike?
Oh, there there's another hearing as well on the 21st.
Oh, okay. So we either, um, and their meeting is at seven. We either try and do this for like five o'clock. Um, five or 5:30 to six or 6:30 depending. Um, or we have to come up with another date. Um, um, tell me, let me know if if a meeting before the ZBA meeting would be something that you all could do, um, or if it's better if we just find a different date. Um, and and we'll try and do it before the end of the year, because once we get beyond, we don't know if it's got to be an in-person or not.
So do you want to, um, do you want our opinions right now or did you want to?
Any thoughts you've got? Yes.
Okay, thoughts, fellow commissioners? Dates. I I know, actually, and Michelle, I just got pulled to Ann Arbor City Council meeting that night, but that starts at seven. And I probably don't need to be there right when it starts, but, um, and I probably wouldn't get called till midnight anyway, but technically I need to be there about seven. Well, be there by being exactly where I am right now at seven, so. Uh, other thoughts?
If we did an earlier time, that could work for you.
Yes, but I know that might be a problem for others depending on.
Right.
So other thoughts, other com- commissioners, five o'clock?
Earlier is okay for me.
I could do it earlier.
Okay, um, there's some support for him. Mr. Cardy, any thoughts?
No thoughts or you couldn't do it earlier?
Uh, I'm gonna be, uh, game day decision on that because there's related things.
Yep, okay, um. Wah or Marnie, any thoughts on the 21st?
I work eight, three to five from home, so and it's a pretty hard stop at five, if I say so with my boss, so I'm fine for earlier.
Okay, thank you. Tom, Allison.
Allison.
Works for me.
Five o'clock works for you, you said?
Yes.
Tom?
Uh, yeah, that's fine. I can make work.
Okay, cool.
Marnie, any thoughts either way?
I can make it work. I might be a few minutes late.
Thank you. Thank you. Our student reps.
Oh, yeah, student reps. I'm sorry, student reps. Any thoughts on that? Eleanor, Aiden?
Um, yeah, I mean, um, we're supposed to be online till three, but really the school day ends at two. So, I mean, anything after two, I guess.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh. Eleanor, Charlotte, Eleanor, are you okay with that?
Yep, that works for me.
I agree.
Thank you. Okay, well, this is this has been very helpful. Thank you all. I appreciate it. Chat, I don't think you chapped in, chimed in.
Sorry, chat.
But yes, it works for me.
Okay, that'll make it a long night for you, but I appreciate that you're able to do it.
No, that's fine. So I usually, I'll be sitting in this chair from five to midnight or one or two. That's fine. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so with that, good. Um, anything else for the next meeting then, Michelle? Anything else to to share regarding that? Oh, we're good. All right. Uh, item 12, citizens wishing to address the commission. Looking through my list, I still see nobody else except for us. So with that, uh, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'm, uh, support.
Roberts, I heard somebody say support, but I couldn't tell who it was.
Healy.
Oh, okay, support, move Roberts, support Healy. Uh, all in favor of the of adjournment? Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Bye, everybody.
Okay.
Bye, y'all. Thank you so much.
You later in December.
Merry Christmas.
Yeah.
Not yet, we'll see.
Merry Christmas, everyone. We'll see you in in a couple of weeks.
Yes.
But I'll see you guys on 21st. Happy New Year.
Thank you all.
Thank you too, Sarah. All right, good night, everybody.
Good night.